It's getting closer, yeah. Uh, well, the funds are available through the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program through the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, and Bureau of Justice. The 2015 allocation amount for Lawrence County and/or the city of Newcastle is twenty-four thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. The county of Lawrence has signed the interlocal agreement allowing the city of Newcastle to apply the entire amount. The grant does not require matching funds. The planned use of the funds is for a vehicle for the police department. A resolution is needed at the May twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, city council meeting to apply for said grant and for the city of Newcastle to enter into an interlocal agreement with the county of Lawrence. Any questions?
You made for the public, have any questions? You made for the council, have any questions?
What vehicle we gonna buy? We gonna buy another squad car? What?
There'll be another police car, yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
They really look a win.
I'm sorry?
They look a win or a rate?
Uh, I'd have to refer to police chief on that.
Uh, any other discussion? We'll put on a resolution for it. Out of thirty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. But, oh, you start work. Um, April fourth, or not April, August third, you have.
We stand as a United States of America. Through the public which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice are all.
Call the caucus agenda. Tonight is, today's the twenty-sixth, at six-thirty, May twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen. We please call the roll.
Mr. Adamo?
Here.
Mr. Misher?
Here.
Mr. Focussen?
Here.
Hey, now?
Here.
We have two more things added. Agenda, there's a deal with McGaffitt, plus, and the traffic, we got number twelve, we put in their post, a request for, uh, for a thing in this, for any capital bodies of public. No public comments? Order reports. Mayor, wanna start it off?
Well, any questions on my report? What I've, what I've done is brief you on the number of initiatives that we are required to attract, or at least to attempt to attract, and, uh, I think we got all of them, this is very latest.
Oh, you got two of them, yeah, guys. Yes. Do they have any questions with mayor considering any report?
Okay. Right here.
Stephanie, you have anything?
Hold on. No, this is it.
You constructed it, Steve.
Hold on one second, please. Bill. Hold on. There, I took them on the side.
Okay, they're waiting. They're there, wait. Can I go forward now? Okay, Stephanie.
Um, the only thing constructive I have to say is that, um, two things have pointed out. Through the end of March, um, our cash balance, we have an increase of a little over two-point-one million from the same period a year ago, which has allowed us once again to get through the first quarter, um, without the use of a tax anticipation note and saving interest, um, expense. Um, our tax money's starting to come in in February, so as we enter the second quarter is when you'll see a lot of that starting to come in and your revenue starts to pick up. So, um, with that being said, we do have a loss at the end of March of approximately one-point-eight-nine million, but you could see that at the same point in last year, we had a loss of one-point-eight-eight-six, so it's about a twelve, almost thirteen-thousand-dollar difference. So what that tells me is we're basically on track because your first quarter of the year, you're always gonna be, um, kinda backwards because you have your expenses constant, but your revenue really peaks in the second and third quarter, so. That is all I have. Am I saying we have any questions?
Do we have any questions?
Um, hold on. Steph and the mayor, uh, what, I see that, I don't see, we, we discussed a while back when the, uh, and I believe it's completed right now, is the McGaffitt case, is it?
Yes, it's completed.
It's all completed, all?
They're now paid and?
All it's paid and that?
Yes.
And I know that, um, under the Act forty-seven, they, they put that money away for that, so it didn't have to come out of the coffers of the city because we got the money when, when the sanitation authority purchased.
That's right.
Okay, so, what, what I'm getting at, I know we asked Act forty-seven what we could do with that balance, and, and I agree we have to do that. Has there been any thing back from Act forty-seven yet on that money?
There has not, and the reason why is they're still working on a few things to put that final plan together. We just talked to them today, um, and they're waiting on some information on the actuaries to look at pension projections over the next two to three years because that hole that we all know about, that two-to-two-and-a-half-million-dollar hole, we just don't know what that looks like, so I think they're pulling out on, on that answer based on what that hole looks like. Um, and the reason why is because that hole obviously needs a tax increase that nobody wants, you know, and nobody wants to talk about, but like I tell you, I'm gonna tell you the news whether it's good or not.
No, and I appreciate that.
But that's, that's the reason why, um, I'm not getting any movement on them, but I was happy today to hear that it's a pension because they're, they're getting towards the end of, of the cycle of the plan, so hopefully soon.
Well, I was hoping that they could see the need of the city that would allow the mayor to use that in some of the other projects that we need down the road for the city, such as paving and other things that?
It meets the criteria.
Yeah.
It does, it does, and they've already said that. It meets the criteria because it's capital and it's in need, but they really just wanna see what that hole is before they give us the vote.
Okay. Do you think what, by the end of August, maybe September?
I would hope sooner than that, but I, I won't know.
Okay, 'cause I was hoping that maybe something would break during the summer months that, that mayor could make an initiative.
Yeah, 'cause if we don't really do it, we need to do it before the plans were closed or we beyond old.
Right, and then we gotta go a whole nother winter.
Yeah, we only meet once a month, and maybe they could come in and explain to us, I mean, we haven't seen them in a while.
They will, and they'll come, be coming anyway because you all are going to have to approve any plan that they put in front.
Correct.
So those public meetings and sessions will start, and, and if I don't have an answer, I'm hoping to have an answer before that, but if I don't, that will be the time where we can really discuss that, and that will be this summer.
I trust you. Thank you for the update. I appreciate that.
I'll go, Steph.
That's all I had, county president.
Okay, Department of Public Works, Mike, could make tonight something else. We're gonna, he'll be at the next meeting. I don't have anything, just pushing it. We need him to carry it tonight to discuss. Next is the golf course, Josh.
Parks and Recreation. For both the Parks and Recreation is next. Dr. Popovich. But I can, I gotta text from Brian on Parks and Recreation, it's so nice, and Josh wants to expand on that, but that's fine, but I'll, I'll read you with Brian.
Okay, good.
The Parks and Recreation Recreation, by the way, the fields are looking good, Jim and Ryan, they, they've done a nice job. Um, they're running for a major league baseball grant for lighting a theme park, and that was the lady from Major League Baseball, she flew to New York to look at the project, the long attack, the hundred tires, and we must perform that. And, um, as far as the golf course, uh, he said we started in a hole, but, um, the park rentals and the greens fees are all up, and the membership is down, but we picked up a few more outings, and, uh, he thinks that the, uh, the golf course is looking good as usual, once we get out of that, that park piece, the golf courses are either breaking even or making a draw. Season's just starting. Right. Golf courses are great.
I'd like to expand on what, what, uh, Mr. Misher said. I spoke with Brian as well today, and we're already added a game from wherever last year at Red, um, but the golf course looks fantastic. Uh, he, you know, the first cut's a little rough right now, but I know he's letting it fill in, but the course looks great, it's being operated properly, but they have plans to fix the fountain and a couple other issues that they ever had and a couple water areas, but, um, looks like it's gonna work. Our new guys doing a fantastic job, so.
You did a great job of putting our course out, you get any course in the tri-county, but then, yeah, and our green, they're still investing in the whole county.
Um, I also talked to him about the condition of the fields, um, some of the fields look great, some of them don't. Uh, there's reasons, in case anybody's addressing, I've been addressed a couple times, some of the fields don't look so well, but they haven't been maintained for a couple of years when they're at the beginning stages of catching up with the rain and the grass overgrowing, um, and what I discussed with you, mayor, about the weeds and whatnot, that he's addressing all of that in the area in your future, so. They are doing a good job right now. The course looks great.
And, uh, precious, so if a piece, but we have? Yeah, so a piece, well, we asked you also.
And we're the seventh. We have a twenty-seven teams, whatever that amounts to. I know the greens fees are a little bit close to three thousand dollars is what we're gonna be putting into that, so.
Are we facing any else in the golf course? Parkman, what, Parkman? Yana Parkman?
Any questions?
Any questions, Josh?
Who's supposed to be here giving a report on Parkman?
Josh, Josh, sitting in the back.
Any questions?
Please, you have any questions? Department of Community, how much you felt? Do you have any questions? Anybody have any questions, Matt?
I would pronounce my last name, right?
No, no, it's not your name, Martin. Tell us everything, Matt. So, Matt, I have a question for you. So, tonight is phase one of our demolition, am I correct?
Of, uh? Yes, sir.
To Mr. C, that's our phase one.
Yes, sir. Yes.
And then we'll have another phase, when do you think that will happen?
Uh, I'll consult with the mayor, and as soon as he's ready, uh?
Okay.
Right, there are dollars, but, uh, right, CPG funding, we have not received the contract yet, so as soon as we receive that, then, then we'll obviously consult the mayor and get going.
Do you think that'll happen before the governor's budget gets resolved or unresolved before the end of the month?
Uh, I can't speculate other way, sir.
Okay, no, I didn't know.
I would be hopeful, but I?
'Cause I was saying this year's funding, am I correct?
Right, 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 but that's not going, I, it's best my knowledge, that's, you know, that's a separate, you know, federal dollars that passes, passes through the state, so I don't think we'll throw the effect.
Okay, no, that's all master, because I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with what the homes were taking down, Mr. Mayor. That's a nice list, I think it'll make a difference in those neighborhoods of getting them down. I think people will be happy to see that, and if we can do a phase two before winter sets in, that would even be better.
Five or seven pages. Well, and, and don't forget too, we'll also have this, um, fair points available as well, so we're already, so we're leveraging quite a number of, of dollars for this year, so we're very excited about that. And also, you know, speaking of major league baseball, it was very interesting that the lady flew down here just for Newcastle, it's not like she had a full day to go visit different communities, so I think that speaks volumes, that she came down here just for the city of Newcastle, so very exciting stuff.
I don't wanna jump the topic to the next team, five or seven pages, that important, there?
No.
I don't think it'll be, I don't have a?
Is it? His big, his only fifty-four thousand.
Five or seven pages, you ask him that?
I think one, I think, I'll check.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Matt, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got specific police departments, see the chief here. Big, any questions, my, chief?
I asked a question earlier, Paul, but Matt, on this JAG grant that we're gonna get, is that just for squad car that you're gonna use that for, or is it special?
It'll be for a market, sir.
Just a market? How many would I give you now?
Not enough.
What an answer, it's never enough.
Well, our fleet's?
You think you're bad, Martin?
Our fleet's pretty old right now, as far as mileage on the cars, um, so it was wonderful, we're gonna need a price three more.
I want to start.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. That's the only question I have for you.
This is the center, is that amazing? I always thought? Witness in a picture?
Yes.
Oh, is that what it is?
Picture that came out very good.
No, picture's not very good, but I assume from the size of it, it had to be amazing.
It, it had to see upstairs in the police department, like one quarter.
Um, chief, there's something this weekend, Saturday, maybe you wanna let everybody know, I don't know what the event is, uh?
There's a sculptivale at R L A on West North Street, um, from two-thirty to five-thirty.
West North?
West North Street, five-hundred block of West North Street.
Who's conducted that, like, is there? Do you have any information on?
It's in charge, I can't remember.
Okay.
I can't remember who the church is, but, uh, there's been, the police will be up there.
Who's up there? Is that one from James Church?
No.
If church isn't, I honestly don't know. I got a little bit of info today about it, and I just?
I have the information, but, um, my dad's in here.
Any other questions, chief?
Thank you very much, chief, appreciate it. Mark?
Fire you, Mark.
Well, we're gonna get real hats. You're getting real.
My fleet, they replaced. Two thousand eight.
What do you need? Tell them what you need, Martin.
No, we're, we're working, we're working together. I'm Stephanie and Danny.
Chief, they started that project, they started that project in the fire station down there? It was underway?
Not yet, but, uh, today, uh, I got a call from the engineer meeting him tomorrow morning, and we're gonna go over, means at that station.
Okay.
That's gonna happen tomorrow morning.
When's your roof starting?
Uh, we're waiting for, I have a meeting tomorrow, and I'm gonna find out if we got a little bit of extra funding, and we're gonna do a layer installation of it, if possible.
And we'll be in Newcastle.
The Hoyt, chief? Jack, the Hoyt as well?
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully they'll give it to you, take care of some stuff.
We're waiting for good news from the federal government to go.
You'll get it.
With fingers crossed.
You'll get it.
Yeah, I don't think.
We can't stand this.
Yeah, everything's for us.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions, the chief? Okay, thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Chief, I'd like to go, all, all the departments that are here and the ones that are, you guys are doing a great job, you're always part of the solution, you're a part of the law, appreciate that.
Thank you.
On the agenda for May twenty-eighth, we get to see the bids for Capitol Hill and Temple Park, most?
Right. That'll be thrilled.
Yeah, we're receiving up.
Yeah, um, yeah, the, one of the interns will be here, and Josh will be here as well.
Next is the resolution, uh, memo on the table, and that's authorizing the mayor and city council, city controller, agreeing abortion to the center, it'll be sixteen parking spaces, five dollars a month, one year, on this table. Are there any discussions concerning this?
Well, yeah.
Go ahead.
We're on resolution, we're on resolution.
I don't know. Mr. Wilson in the parking.
Yeah, we're gonna?
Are we on, Captain, are we on resolutions or?
Where are we at?
I don't know.
Stephanie, Stephanie went behind us.
No, Linda went, swing her.
Where are you keeping, where are you keeping the office next?
I don't like this, where are we?
I still wasn't waiting.
Where are we? We, we were on a, we were on this parking lot, and we're gonna bid it.
Does anybody have a page, John?
Do you have any problem with that?
Then we're gonna open it.
We're gonna open them in, in the ward.
And then, so, well, it's, it's the, we're telling you to sign a resolution, but she only does it so.
All right, now, we finished, what about the resolution table for parking spaces in Washington Center?
Yeah. Where, where are we with this, 'cause did Mr. Wilson agree to that sum? Did it, you were gonna have a conversation with him, Matt?
We caught, we caught her for most.
Right, I'm trying to remember.
He's talking to his tenants, I believe.
That's right, thank you. I can only remember one hand.
I think he'll accept it, but, you know.
Well, we can.
I did.
We don't know he's come to this.
Yeah.
Come on, afford it, Matt.
I did speak with him and mention it, um, he seemed very receptive to it, however, he's not gone back to me yet, he said he wanted to, as the mayor indicated, speak with all of his tenants, 'cause obviously everybody's been supporting him since he was passed, uh, so he hasn't got back to get, um, give him a call again tomorrow morning, just to follow up, since I haven't heard back from him.
We've been kicking this around for a couple months now, we just wanna, let's do some work.
Okay, let me ask this question while you're there, stick around.
All right.
My, my understanding is that Mr. Wilson is, um, looking at doing something with the town mall. Am I correct or incorrect on that?
There's a rumor he wants to buy it.
Yeah.
I noticed it in discussions with the property owner.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna get a feeling of this, okay, I'm gonna make my voice loud and clear, okay? If, if this Mr. Wilson wants to do what he wants to do and can get control of Washington Center and do what he did with, I mean, with the town mall, what he's done with the Washington Center, I'm willing to go, what, what he offered us is the four hundred dollars a month and, and let it go. I, I really am, I think that we need to work with the guy because he's working with us.
Well, from, from what it's worth, then, if we, whether we're voting on this Thursday or not, I'll probably disagree at any price anyway, just to be fair, um, regardless of who the landlord would be. And there's a lot of reasons, but until it becomes something we're voting on, I'll kinda just, I guess we'll leave it at that, so we're not gonna discuss it necessarily 'cause it may not come up Thursday. Am I right?
I can give him a call right now, for what he does.
Yeah, there's no need to call him now, just?
I'd like to know how Matt Stanishevsky and the mayor's administration feel about this issue. That's all, just, just, uh, I just wanna make sure all in the same thing.
I think it was, it was cost effective. It cost us anyway. It's costed us, it's costed us money anyway. We did, I said, if you look at my breakdown back on April eighth, the average revenue generate sixteen meters on North Murk Street, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
A month.
A month. Now, if you look, if you do the four hundred dollars, we're losing money. Five hundred dollars is a fair price, I think it's a fair price. We break out, put the signs up there that courtesy of Washington Center, and go from there. We may receive other proposals too, we'll build the same way that we deal with this one. So, four hundred is, is not enough. If you wanna make, if you wanna, I, I don't wanna lose any money, it's all.
I don't wanna?
We're not losing a lot, but still seventy-nine dollars, fifty cents a month is still money.
I, I just, for what it's worth, then, I guess I'll say, I just think piecemeal is a bad idea. I don't know that I'd agree with it, and I'll say this again, I guess, I don't, I wouldn't agree with it probably anyway at all, but if we were gonna actually do this, I'd rather do every street parking space at once and, and actually bring in a big, big chunk of money if it's possible. Um, also, and I'll say it again, once an asset becomes a commodity, then expect it, even when we're gone from this council, to be worse traded, every time there's, every time there's a spot in front of a building, expect the landlord to want some type of separate deal. And that's just my opinion, I'll talk about it again when we go. Here's what I worry about, is, uh, he, he's done wonders for us, he's invested in our city, and, and the appreciation can't be expressed enough. Don't worry about, he's the next person that comes, and then we, we just do an analysis on five meters in front of them, and what five meters we pick, I mean, and then maybe the next business wants this deal, then what do we do, never? I, I? That's where I see it. It's a hard issue. I, I agree because of the man himself.
It is a hard issue. We did, uh, refresh demo, we gave them free parking. We did, and they got free parking. Nothing.
Right.
At all, we did that. That's all, that's, and Bill, that's all I'm saying, is, look, we got a gentleman that wants to invest in our city, and if he's fortunate enough to get a hold of the old town mall down there, which is basically about seventy to eighty percent vacant, there's not too many things left in there, and eighteen T will be shutting down very soon. If, if he's got a plan, let's not work with him, let's, I mean, let's work with him and show our appreciation. We gave a hundred parking spaces away, okay, and we're happy that we did, I'm not, no, but if you gave them, then you got other merchants looking at us and saying, hey, what, you know, we gave them the building, we gave them the parking, why can't we work out something that's it for him, that's all. And, and maybe, Paul, Paul, maybe you're right, we don't vote on it, and, and we just tabled this thing until we come up with a real plan.
And I wouldn't wanna re-debate those parking spaces, I wasn't here, I'm not gonna judge you, but I would say this, those aren't a lot, am I right? They're not on the street. And there is a difference between a lotterie garage and a city street.
And that's correct.
Like, my understanding, and I've talked to people at the Confluence, not only did it take, what he, everybody's in there has a meeting, he picks up the tab, where, and I think that's pretty, pretty generous for the city, everybody that's had a meeting, and he gives them free parking. The Confluence gives free parking, it's free. You know, I, I certainly wanna show that we have some appreciation for what people do, and I have no problem, at, at the mayor, without us losing money at five hundred dollars a month, I'd prove it any day, I have no problem. I don't wanna lose money, we're getting four hundred and ninety, I don't wanna lose a dollar a year, or, or, I don't wanna lose any money, but I think he's done it. Every time I talk to him, everybody has everything they're gonna say about him, and I think he went through something with Square, he gets the town mall, he did something there. You know, and I, I just don't want people to start, I mean, push back on him, saying, you know, we wanna do anything, we wanna work with you, just do what we want. I don't think we need that.
I, I don't either, Bill, and all I'm looking for is fairness, that's all I'm looking for. So, if we're gonna table it, we can go back human executives.
You think you have an answer for him?
I'm gonna call him right now, okay?
What I got is he's gonna accept the five hundred first, you know, but you gotta want to, and we talked about it enough, let's just further on it Thursday, if you're all right. I mean, that's kinda how I feel, like, I, I can't keep saying table it, where I'm saying my vote already is gonna be? No. No. That's what we were talking about, you're right, back to everybody's? You know what I mean? And he makes the other one.
They're all opinions.
They're all good.
And they're all good points when you call it rolling.
I still will.
You think I was paying attention to you? Word of bids, Taske Park, Jasper Park, we got thirty, uh, recommending Daniel, Terry and Son?
Yeah.
Where are you from?
I don't know.
Ohio, I thought you said.
North Jackson, Ohio.
Yeah, Ohio.
But they were significantly lower.
Wouldn't it about ten thousand?
Um, they were, yeah, well, about five, it's thirty-eight, then forty-three, then forty-five. Um, we have fifty thousand two hundred, budgeting sales while under budget, so. Um, we have 50,200 budgeting sales while under budgeting, so.
Use that money over there.
Okay, is that going to be, we have, have done a resolution, except the bid, that'll be on air for Thursday night. Next thing is the demolition. And that's, uh.
Seagull.
They have a list of the fourteen homes, and that was your sequel, huh?
Yeah, fourteen.
Fourteen, we have a list there.
That was the last 14 months of the, of the.
Know what we were in about?
Good number, what did he say?
About 41, $100 a house.
Right.
We have 14 houses. Here's the, here's a list of houses. Oh, do you have it?
Yeah, I have that.
Okay, good.
This will deplete the entire food and water budget under the general fund of 50,000, and it will utilize 8500 of the neighborhood stabilization. So, um, we'll have the balance in neighborhood stabilization funds plus CEBG funds plus fare funds to do face to.
Get a response. I think Matt Ashoff is ready.
Spoke with Tom, he, uh, agreed to 500. He said he wants to start doing this, uh, in Jan, he wants to start a fresh fiscal year in January, so January 2016. Um, and he also pointed out that, um, you know, obviously these are two hour slots that the city's still free to, you know, if someone's there, if you let's say three hours, we'll take it down. It's, you know, a revenue for the city, so.
See, that's our, that's actually our goal. We are not going to have, so when they're monitored, it's.
I know, he was just, I was just relaying the message, um, but that's, uh, he said, yes, 500 starting January 16.
They put a timeline on this. That's it, that's how they do it.
Waynesburg, Waynesburg, PA, down in Green County, that's what they do.
And then they go by in two hours and you're still there.
Yeah, just a question.
I'm not advocating.
No, I just, that's how some cities do it.
Absolutely. Just a question, can we timeline it, see how it works out for a year and see if it's, or does that have to be, we sign it over, we're not forever.
Sign over, we're done, we get some $500 money, we're making, we're paying for what it must cost us anyway. And we don't have to maintain.
Right now, you're at 500, I'm ready to vote Thursday, upper down.
Jason Johnson, Jason Johnson agreed that I think which was an out clause for each party.
Yeah, everybody's ready to vote, so. Yeah. Everybody's ready to vote on it, so.
Put on agenda. Thanks, thanks for calling, Matt.
You're welcome.
Capitol improvements for the city bicycle unit.
Um, I'm going to defer to Bobby on this. Basically, what this would be though, is a tax amendment to the budget. It's really not a line item transfer. Basically, we have originally budgeted for cameras in the vehicles, um, and we don't have enough money for that because we didn't realize that we needed the other component units to get those things up and running. So we're about 20,000 too short. So, um, what Bobby did then is he realized that it makes sense to maybe start the city bicycle unit, which was a plan for the city, um, police department, but it was a couple of years down the road, to kind of swap it out.
Then we used to have a bicycle unit?
Yes, but it's been, well, that's, Bobby can answer those questions. But as far as this, the reason why it's in front of you is because it would be a tax amendment because right now there's nowhere in the capital, it says city bicycle unit, it says cameras. So if you're in agreement, that's actually what you can prove, and not a change in money, it's just a change of content, I guess. I've never done it before, so that's kind of here.
Is there any grants from Oklahoma, instead of a tank, maybe we get cameras in our cars?
Yeah, and that, that happened under my administration. And, um, I wanted an honest answer. Because all of a sudden, everybody wanted to ride a bike, and then two years later, I couldn't get anyone to ride a bike. Is that going to happen again?
No, um, what we did was we took five officers, um, we got volunteers first of all, um, we took five officers. They're being trained, um, this Friday they go to their training, um, bikes came in today. And, uh, there'll be mandatory assignments downtown for their downtown patrols during daylight shifts. Um, also, uh, special events. We're having broad areas like Carberry, Kansas, something like, we have a problem with vehicles, all they do is hide.
Well, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong.
There's a lot of reasons we want the bikes, uh, for tactical reasons and for PR reasons.
Okay, because after two years, it wore off its novelty, and there was only a couple of you guys that still want to ride the bikes, and it, it became very hard to get the guys to ride the bikes.
There will be mandatory shifts in certain areas.
Uh, I believe you, Bobby. I, I just asked a question, okay?
And truthfully, how this conversation came up is because Bobby had said he wanted to start a company, he was going to use, because this is a forfeiture expense as well, so he was going to utilize forfeiture funds to pay for this. But then the more we started thinking about it, talking about these cameras, we don't have the money for the cameras. I mean, there's no way I could find 20 grand cameras.
Even under the forfeiture?
Uh, under the money?
Well, you could, you could, if you wanted to still do it, you know, we can maybe split it next year, do half out of forfeiture, half out of capital.
Right now, we're in a process, um, which I myself and Matt are working on, trying to get a grant for them. We're hoping, we're hoping the grant comes through.
I didn't know that, sorry.
Um, yeah, uh, we're, we're on big work now on it. We're hoping the grant comes through, but whether it does or not, I have no idea.
Well, the bikes that are already here, so we can't vote no's.
You can, because then it'll be a forfeiture expense.
I mean, am I right or wrong?
It would, uh, initially it's going to be paid out of forfeiture.
That was his original plan, and then I said, what are you doing with these cameras? And that's how, so that's kind of how this whole thing evolved.
You wanted it on the general.
Oh, really, thank you, Bobby.
Thank you for the honest answer, Bobby. I appreciate that.
Hey, Bob, real quick, before you go, um, do you remember back in the day when we had actual bicycle patrol?
Yes, that's back under, uh, back, I think that was about the seventh, I believe, when we started up.
Yeah.
That was amazing because you don't hear a bicycle coming either, not, I mean, not before the, before the motorcycle.
That's what he's talking about.
That's what he said.
That's awesome. I mean, we, I think we had, uh, Officer Conti or.
Yeah, I was on it, I was on it.
Oh, he was on it.
Well, yeah, you did, you know, actually not that I remember back, but it was nice because they'd come out of nowhere and they're everywhere. It's a great tool for him.
I do, I, I agree, I agree 100% on both.
Remember that when you're riding back and forth, oh.
It's good exercise.
Thank you, Bobby, I appreciate that.
Excellent.
Got, uh, survey policy and procedures. They're memo, they want to do a citywide income survey.
I don't know too about this, so I'm sorry.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
As you know, we hired in an intern earlier this year, and that intern's been charged with, um, doing a citywide survey because we are essentially challenging our ACS data, which placed us below 50% in HUD's eyes, okay? Basically, what it means is it restricted our hands into where we can spend CEBG funding. This is a requirement per HUD guidelines, again, for CEBG, that we have a procedure on how we're going to handle, uh, the surveys. So it's just a procedure for us moving forward. Any questions? Good, thank you. Thank you.
Next is the park, you made your limitations, they want to change the time from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Is that correct?
None.
Any problems with that? Put on agenda. Land Development, MRJ. We had an issue to exist in building at 311 White Street. R and R.
I have no idea. Where is White Street?
I have no idea.
Oh, okay, is that the street that?
That's the one that runs alongside 3, alongside the old Big Dan.
Okay.
We nail, we nail and nail is White.
White Street is where the EW Tire, the Tire place is down there, Goodyear Tire. Because the antique sign is still in the building.
Oh, is it? They want to construction 5200 square foot of the building, issue to existing commercial buildings. Everything revised? Any problems? They revised everything, right? No.
That's what we retired, co-pay grievance, that's yours, so it's served.
Yes, this grievance was filed after the arbitration award was given, and it deals with retirees' co-pay and the reimbursement that the city would give them for their co-pay. The arbitration award took out reimbursement of co-pay from everyone, but retirees filed a grievance saying it wouldn't have been applicable to them. As a, as a compromise, the city and the FOP have tentatively agreed upon putting aside $10,000 per year to cover retiree co-pay, and if it goes higher than that, then they're stuck with it. It is a lesser cost than what we've been paying, and it will be a diminishing cost as the retirees. Yeah, that's the total, not per person.
That was a contract that was agreed upon. Why do we have to change the contract? Because their grievance would make any difference to, that was agreed upon contract.
It wasn't an agreed upon contract, it was an arbitration.
Well, the arbitration, they had taken it, they would have accepted a bill from it today.
And it was, there was, it was based on, uh, it was based on actives and our retirees, and we attempted to include it for actives, and there was, there was a valid argument on their side as to why it did not apply to retirees, this was a way to save money, as opposed to keeping them in the situation that they're presently in.
Officers that retire from the current, like Lieutenant Homme, one of these times they get there, they don't get anything. This would go back to the ones that retired under the old contract prior to the arbitration award. Their argument was that they bought the benefit that they, in the contract that they retired from. And this became advice really from labor council that we should try to sidle with, because he said, we're probably going to lose it, but we're going to have to pay actual costs, which is what we pay now. So now if they turn in, um, $2,000 worth of reimbursements, I have to pay the $2,000 for now. He said this will match you out, the city's only paying 10,000 total for all 21 of them, and as they retire, it'll, you will pay less and less and less than the diminishing delay. He said it's a legacy cost, but this is one way to cap your amount. This is risk fighting this more, spending more money fighting it, losing it, and having to pay actual costs.
And I guess, if you're co-paying 400 retirees, and they're, let's assume all 21 are sick, and they have co-pay, what happens when you say 10,000? You, I'm not going to pay you because I got, I don't have money?
The, the way the arbitration, the way the settlement reads, is they have to turn them in between December 1st and December 15th, and then it's pro-rated, you know, if it exceeds, if it's over, it's a thousand dollars.
They'll tell you the 21 employees.
Yeah, and, but actually one's coming off, this, like, pretty soon, so it'll be 20, and then eventually it'll be 19, and 18, and, and eventually this will go away, and there will be no post-reparation, um.
And it's not, we're not handing over $10,000 to anyone, we're having, we're budgeting $10,000 per year. And as the number diminishes, so will the amount diminish. Although we budgeted for 10,000, there'll be a point where we'll be spending 5,000, 4,000.
Understanding what you, what you both just said, if, say the total bill came to 22,000, you're only going to pay 10,000, so they each get an equal share of that 10,000.
Pro-rated share.
Yeah, pro-rated share, okay.
I don't have a problem with it.
And like I said, it will go away, this is, it's, unfortunately, it's a legacy cost. You know, we can either minimize the liability or risk it, and at this point, I say minimize.
It's going to cost us more to fight it. Let's not gamble, let's control what we can.
If I did, I will.
Ordinance is on the table. We have the panels, we put one in on, uh, supplementing the ordinance for six word. That, you see one general, it's different. That'll be on air, and the, uh, next one, which is.
Don't go there, Bobby. Don't go, that's the only one, first.
Almost, chief. All right, next one. Next one is our animals, is this the hens and chickens?
Yes, two.
Put it on or down.
You knew it was going to be that, you just put it on and brought it up and down.
This does, now my understanding, Mr. Dorr, this has nothing to do, no hens are in this. Is that correct?
No, hens are eliminated.
Yeah, hens are in there.
They're eliminated. Yes, hens are eliminated. They're eliminated, in other words, you can't have chickens at all.
Exactly.
So the, the, the ordinance, the way it is written, is no chickens at all, roosters and hens.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we need to know.
That's, and that's what we're voting on.
Yeah.
That's the biggest thing in that.
That's the new change.
If we're changing from what?
So you were allowed to have hens, but no roosters.
No, you weren't, you weren't allowed, you weren't allowed to have both of them. Now we're not going to have any of them.
Right.
In other words, you could have roosters and hens, now you can't have any of them.
Correct.
According to what Mr., this list is putting in the ordinance. And what's, huh?
No poultry.
Huh?
No poultry.
I never thought of it that way. So we're voting on whether or not we want the ordinance to.
And really consider.
Eliminate the people that talk to her about their hens.
Yes, but in, in considering the, uh, the cost of advertising things like that, it really doesn't make any sense to, if, if you're thinking of, hey, can we just fix it a little bit? Can we change what's left there? It's probably just easier to vote it up or down, and then tell me what changes you'd rather have, and then we can start again. Because we have the advertising.
Later on, we could add giraffes, or ostriches, or tigers, or bears, or monkeys, right?
But if it goes down, if it goes down.
We still have the old ordinance.
Right, and then we can reconstruct that old ordinance if we choose.
We can. Yeah.
But this is defeatable, we're stuck with what we have now.
We'll be stuck with what we have until you give me new direction.
Maybe we side hens there, anything else that we're eliminating.
Geese, uh, miniature ponies.
Don't all we bring now.
Yeah.
I know.
He's a Beaver County now. Did he? Maybe we got a Beaver County anyway. He didn't want anybody to have one.
And we, we expanded the area for, we expanded the size of the, um, distance from houses that the tenants would be for anything that's still available.
Thanks, Steve. When the mayor and I were young, we brought the little beef, remember? The colored ones on Murphy's.
Oh, yeah.
We brought the little pigs on Murphy's. Okay. Mr. Admiral, the next 20,000 pound white lemon on downtown roads.
I want to talk about number three, but I wait till Bobby gets back in the room.
Okay, we'll go off into one.
Do you think someone in the Senate, like Corporal Fabian, gives you information, he said he wants to get back in the back room?
Yeah. Okay, we'll skip that and come back to it. Uh, next one is creating a handicap parking space at 629 Raymond Street, that'll be on agenda. Next one, the, the subdivision of 101 Blanchard Street, 312 Montgomery Avenue, 7th Fourth. Consolidation, but the hearing is scheduled for 23rd June, 6 o'clock. And before we get back to it, we'll get these other two. We have, uh, Corporal Fabian requesting handicap parking, and 302 East Wallace Avenue, where Mr. Henning is disabled, he has a valid handicap parking. And, and might put that on agenda, and he's also requesting, uh, Elizabeth, or is it Winston? How's that? For 717 Maple Street, he is also disabled, and he's requesting the action, a lot there.
Where are we going to do patches first? I think that drivers.
Number 14, isn't it?
I didn't see it.
The first one.
Yeah.
First one, the patches place. Six word, getting it from the, the general business, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't, okay.
This is bad, we got access. The only we can, the only we can act, can act on is the last one, and that has to be a due, we have the hearing due. That's, when we get back to our. Yeah, we'll wait for number three till we get back to it. Bobby, yeah. Bobby, you want to talk about the 20,000 pound living on downtown streets?
Corporal Fabian, uh, did some research, um, we looked at some ordinances in, uh, Melvin and State College, a lot of places, they have a similar ordinance. Um, what this would do is stop trucks from coming through our downtown streets, um, East Washington, North, um, Mill, maybe Keepan Mall, Pro, Prodan Avenue, um, Cleaver Bell, Jefferson Street. It would help our roadways and help homeless traffic.
I have a question, because I've been asking this even from the past council, and now we're asking publicly. What do we, do we have anybody qualified to take away these trucks? Do we have a scale?
Do we have a scale? Can we, if these trucks are coming through, and we think they, they exceed the weight limit, who's going to do that?
Last month, we purchased two scales from the state ten thirty-three program, we've got what we do on, we, a couple hundred bucks for a couple scales, which is a great price. We have them right now, we don't have anyone certified, two, two of them, the mixed-up courses are only offered once in a while. The problem with that is, pretty much by dedicating officer, we have full time, which means I'll be taking a guy out of patrol.
Well, I understand that, I mean, we're putting an ordinance in with a weight limit, so, I mean, why do we get the scales if we're going to take an officer off, if we can't take an officer off?
We are second officer for the mixed-up program, we are.
Can, why don't we just call the state in once we got the truck pulled over?
That's what we do right now.
Right, and then we share the cost, instead of taking another officer off the street.
What we do right now is we call in the state, they'll come away the truck for us, and we still get the, we still, we still write the citation, we still get the funds.
Right. And we get the funds?
We get the funds, the state officer, yeah, who'll come and testify as a witness that he can weigh the trucks, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to take another officer off.
That'll be...
I don't either, but I mean, I, no one ever said the state would come and weigh them and we would get the fine, I never got that answer.
Yeah, I know they would, that's why I asked.
Gee, are you for this?
I am.
I'd rather have an officer out in the streets instead of...
Before, I just, you know, we're going to say...
I know.
We always complain that we don't have enough officers, and I, I don't want to take an officer off the street when the state can suffice us, and we're going to still get the same ticket, we're going to get their money, am I correct on that?
Yeah.
And then we have an officer out there on the streets fighting crime for us.
Yeah, that's fine.
Probably good to have a guy qualified.
I've never gotten that answer in seven years.
We, we are second officer to the mixed-up program, in case we do get...
I'd never ask, you know what I mean?
No, no, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Probably good to have an officer qualified, either way, so.
Do you, what streets are they on? Is he talking about Allen Avenue or East Washington Street?
There'll be the downtown streets, East Washington, Mill, North, East, we have a list of them, but it's many of the downtown area streets.
And we want the state.
The state streets is where there would be the auto travel, which is Crohn Avenue, state routes such as Crohn Avenue.
The U. state routes.
No, no, there would be the auto ride on state roads.
So when are we...
That's the route they have to take.
Will we send out notification to all, like, CBS, TC, Ready Mix, all of them, let them know that of a certain date, if they get caught going through town, they're going to get fined?
It'd be a violation of the ordinance. Local deliveries, obviously, we allow, local deliveries, that'd be an exception to, to the ordinance, but as far as cement trucks and everything, they would also have to travel those roads.
So now, what are you going to do for the parade, when the big trucks come in for the parade? There are over twenty thousand pounds, I'm asking a question.
That's like a local delivery type of situation, but you have trucks coming in, local deliveries.
You appear to be...
Under, there'll be exceptions written into the ordinance, I'm sure that would be one of the exceptions, it's a good point, though.
Hey, all of a sudden, they're going to say, hey, wait a minute, guys.